Good afternoon. Welcome to the May 14, 2015, meeting of the City-County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live by one some TV digital media. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Before we get into our agenda, though, I'd like to take this time to recognize one of our staff, Margaret Basset, and I'd like to share a letter with the board members here as well. This is from the UNC School of Government. It says that Margaret Basset, Assistant Planning Director, City of Winston-Salem, Forsyth County, has successfully graduated from the 2014-15 Municipal and County Administration course of the School of Government, University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. The program in municipal administration is designed for managers, department heads, and officials whose responsibilities require a broad understanding of functions beyond individual areas of specialization. The course is approximately 150 hours in length, and more than 60 instructors participate in leading the program. Course instruction covers North Carolina local government law, organization and management, finance and budgeting, employment law and administration, planning and regulation of development, and the delivery of specific city and county services. On behalf of the board, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Our first order of business today will be the consent agenda. These are items which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which the staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes, and there is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board is in work session, no one will be allowed to speak unless a planning board member asks a question. For general use district zoning requests, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district. Therefore, the petitioner may not refer to specific use for the property. For special use district zoning, however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda require final approval by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken by the planning board today concerning these items or recommendations are considered by those bodies during their review of the request. If you are addressing the board today, before you begin your comments, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. First item of business, approval of the minutes of the April 9, '23, and '27 meetings. Are there any additions, corrections to those minutes?
No approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Younger. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. I now call on Aaron King to present our consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First item for consent is Item B1. It's zoning docket F-1551, and this is a request to rezone just under two acres of land located on the south side of Kenny Road, east of Stires Ferry, and north of 421 from limited office special use to limited office limited use zoning. The intent of this request is to add the use offices. You can see the subject property there in yellow, existing non-residential building on the site. Again, it's already zoned office, and this would add the use offices to that, and staff would recommend approval of this limited office limited use request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, the public hearing closed.
No approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Younger. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B2. It's zoning docket W-3263, and this is a request to rezone two acres from highway business special use to highway business limited use. This is located on the east side of Indiana, south of Perimeter Point Boulevard. You can see the subject property there in yellow. It's got an existing commercial building on the site now. If you look at the zoning pattern in the area, you can see a lot of general industrial, limited industrial, highway business, and general business. So staff is comfortable with this request for highway business limited use zoning. We would recommend approval. Sorry.
Thank you. Again, is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, the public hearing closed.
No approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Younger. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B3. It's docket W-3264, and this is a request to rezone about 10 acres from residential multifamily, eight units per acre, back to RS9. You can see the site there in yellow. It's on the north side of Romero Drive, and it's north of I-40 there. This is in the Jonestown Road area. This was rezoned back in the mid-2000s for a multifamily development that never materialized, so the owners would like to take this back to its RS9 zone. The staff would recommend approval of that.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, the public hearing closed.
No approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Younger. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And the last item is B4. It's docket W-3265, and this is a request to rezone a small piece of land over on Green Street from RM5 to PBS. And as we've gotten to discussions with the petitioner on this, staff felt that the neighborhood business district might be a more appropriate request here. Petitioners agreeable, and they will be modifying their request for neighborhood business limited use, but they do need to continue it one month in order to do that. They got their continuance request in by our automatic deadline, which is this past Monday, so this is automatically continued to your June meeting. And that's the end of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Aaron.
Next item on your agenda is zoning docket W-3266. The petitioner is Lynn Wood Davis, and the site is 27.23 acres located on the east and west sides of Silas Creek Parkway at Fairlawn Drive. The request is a special use and a special use limited request, rezoning request, from general office special use to general business special use, and from general business and RM12S to general business L and limited office L without a site plan. This is Legacy's growth management plan. You can see the subject property is located in the northwest portion of the city in the yellow suburban neighborhoods, Growth Management Area 3. It's located along Silas Creek Parkway, which is a growth corridor, and it's just northeast of the Renolda-Fairlawn Drive Activity Center. This is a subject property here highlighted in yellow. This image shows the lotting pattern and development pattern and zoning of the site and surrounding properties, as well as the gray images there, the gray shapes or building footprints. And so the current property, as you can see, is currently undeveloped there with Silas Creek Parkway traversing through it there at the terminus of Fairlawn Drive. Over to the southwest, you have Renolda Road and a mixture of zoning there. Directly below the site is GOS zoning. That's the Wells Fargo Data Center located there. Directly to the southwest, you have, excuse me, the Greencrest Neighborhood there, zoned single-family residential RS9. Some institutional zoning going kind of around the clock there along Fairlawn where there's a transmission tower. Further across Fairlawn, you have the Crown Park Apartments, zoned RM12S. Then crossing over Silas Creek Parkway to the right, RM18S. That was the Liberty Healthcare Retirement Community that was approved last year, Life Care Community. And then going down around some RS9, single-family zoning. And then at the very bottom of the image is the Crown Park Multifamily Development, zoned RM12S. This aerial photograph shows the subject property there. Again, it's undeveloped, heavily wooded. There is a small couple of tributaries there on the eastern portion of the stream that's to the east of Silas Creek Parkway. And this is the area plan. It was adopted last year, the North Suburban Area Plan. Colors represent different land uses. Yellow is single-family residential. Blue is institutional. Brown is more dense residential development, intermediate density residential. And pink is office. The subject property there, you can see, is outlined in gray area plan, pretty much reflective of the existing zoning, recommends office use for the properties on the west side of Silas Creek Parkway. The magenta color on the right side of Silas Creek Parkway is shown for a mixture of uses, again reflective of the current GB zoning, which allows for multifamily, retail, and office-type uses. These images are taken on site. This is looking southwest across Silas Creek Parkway, right at the intersection of Fairlawn Drive. This is looking into the southern portion of Track 1, where a proposed convenience store would be located. This is looking northwest from the same position across Silas Creek Parkway. This is looking into property where a grocery store is proposed for development. This is looking eastward on Fairlawn Drive. In the background, you can see the intersection there, the mast arms of the intersection with Silas Creek Parkway. On the right would be, is proposed for GB zoning. Again, that's Track 1, where the convenience store and some other retail buildings and shops would go. On the left is the entrance there to the Crown Park Apartments I mentioned earlier. That's Fairlawn Court. That's a little public street there where that van is pulling out. That would be one of the primary entrances into that site there, where the grocery store and about 9,000 square foot retail are proposed building. This is also looking east on Fairlawn Drive towards the intersection again to Silas Creek Parkway. There's a sidewalk on the north side there. It terminates here. The petitioner has agreed to extend the sidewalk both sides of Fairlawn Drive consistent with a comprehensive transportation plan, all the way to the intersection of Silas Creek Parkway. That was kind of in question when your staff report was published, but they have agreed to do that. Also, city staff went out and looked at the segment on the northern portion along Silas Creek Parkway for potential connection to the Bethabur-Greenway Trail, and due to topography, it was deemed that that was not reasonable. So staff and the petitioner are on the same page as far as sidewalk construction. Sidewalks on both sides of Fairlawn, all the way to the intersection. This is back looking southwest on Fairlawn Drive, transmission tower I mentioned earlier in the background there. One of the traffic improvements that would be phased in would be a center median that would be installed on Fairlawn Drive, once the future development takes place, to regulate left-turning movements. This is Greencrest Drive, the single-family neighborhood I mentioned earlier. This is there at the end of that driveway. The homes to the right back up to the subject property. These are those homes kind of looking in between them into the subject property. You can't see it, but Fairlawn Drive is going towards that direction there. So these homes here would back up to the area proposed for the convenience store. The petitioner has agreed to a 75-foot undisturbed planting area, tree save area, if you will, along the back property line of these homes. That was one of the original conditions of the most recent rezoning on this property in 2001, in addition to a 25-foot planted type 3 buffer yard. So a total of 100 feet of planting area behind these homes has been agreed to. I know there's at least two people in this room, maybe more, that were actually here for this case 27 years ago, the Sunny Knoll Development Case. Very big mixed-use rezoning request. Here you have Renolda Road in the lower portion. It goes all the way up to Bethabur Road. It included an extensive amount of retail office, multifamily development. That was actually approved prior to the construction of Silas Creek Parkway and this portion of Fairlawn Drive. And again, it included an extensive amount of retail office and multifamily. One of the more contentious elements was here at the southwest corner, which is part of the subject property today, a grocery store and shopping center was proposed. However, ultimately, that was approved for office zoning and not retail zoning. The southern portion of that is where the Wells Fargo Data Center was constructed. The northern portion, again, remains undeveloped. The commercial was approved for the eastern side of Silas Creek Parkway. That was approved actually for a mixture of uses, but it could include up to 250,000 square feet of retail. That has obviously not been developed. A large portion of that was included in the 2014 rezoning for the Liberty Healthcare Site to the north of that, so the latter half is still remaining general business zoning. This is a site plan for the subject property, and it actually, this is kind of a two-part request. It does include a site plan on the western portion of Silas Creek Parkway there. You can see the proposed buildings and access points, and then a special use limited request on the eastern side of Silas Creek Parkway, where we don't have a site plan, but we have some conditions regarding land use and connectivity and building appearance, et cetera, that I'll go over briefly in a moment. Just starting in the lower central portion there, right on the corner of Silas Creek Parkway and Fairlawn Drive, is a convenience store proposed with multiple pumps there. It's about a 6,500-square-foot convenience store with a restaurant with a drive-through. They're proposing a right-in, right-out access on the Silas Creek Parkway, and initially a full access with left-turning movements on the Fairlawn Drive. Again, in your staff report at the time we were working on that, we were talking about the potential need for a signal at the further western access point into this larger development, but NC DOT and City DOT are comfortable with that there is not going to be a need for an access, for a signal at that location because of a northern access on the Silas Creek Parkway that I mentioned earlier. So full access at this time for that convenience store, if it was to be approved, that would later be converted to a right-in, right-out access with that median that I mentioned being installed on Fairlawn Drive. Three other buildings on that southern portion of Fairlawn Drive, a restaurant, smaller building for some retail, and then another building for retail use. The blue shows the potential stormwater management facilities, and then the green on the lower left shows the area that I mentioned earlier, the tree save, 75-foot by tree save area backing up to Greencrest, and then the 25-foot landscape buffer. Now, on the northern side of Fairlawn Drive at the entrance there to Fairlawn Court would be the primary entrance going into about a 9,000-square-foot retail building there, multiple-tenant retail building. And then the larger footprint building with the parking up front is about 36,000 square feet. That will be for a grocery store. They would have a right-in, right-out on the Silas Creek Parkway and a right-in, right-out also on Fairlawn Drive, excuse me. Also, part of this site, all these buildings are one-story buildings. I will mention that the current zoning for the southwestern portion that I mentioned in 2001, that was for a four-story, 75,000-square-foot office building. So less intensive a use, but considerably more square footage on that one portion. And the remaining portion on the north is still zoned for office use. Going across Silas Creek Parkway, Track 3 is proposed for limited office, special use limited. That would include a mixture potentially of multifamily, office, institutional-type uses, but no retail uses. Track 2 is proposed for general business, so a little bit more intense zoning there, but with a cap of 20,000 square feet of retail or restaurant-type uses. And there is allowance for a restaurant with a drive-through, but the drive-through would need to be screened from view from Silas Creek Parkway. Also, the developers have been very good to work with. They worked extensively with us on some good conditions regarding the entire development. There'd be at least 65% brick on all the facades of these buildings. There will be common landscaping, so the street yard type of trees and shrubs would need to be consistent on all sections. Also, the interior motor vehicle plantings would be of a different type, but of the same type throughout, different type from the street yard plantings. Agreed to a double row of shrubs around, within the street yard plantings to further screen the parking from the public roadways. Limited signage on brick, monument signage, a lighting condition regarding lighting impacts to the neighbors. That's certainly some things that we did not have in 1988. So some additional protections that we have going into this current request that we're happy to have. Let's see. That's primarily it. I'm going to go over some of those conditions just briefly, but Track 3, you can barely see, there's a couple of tributaries that traverse through there and pretty severe topography. Originally, this Crown Forest Drive, which is a public street that goes into that, it was to match up with a public street that was to go through Liberty Healthcare and terminate right about here.
Gary, could I just get some clarification? On our printout, we've got Track 3 as being the upper part there, and Track 2 as being the lower part. Is the piece you're projecting correct, or is the piece that we studied correct?
I think the site plan's got the numbers switched up. I think you're correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so now I'm totally confused. So what was he talking about?
What you see on the screen for Track 2 is proposed for general business limited use.
That's general business, okay.
General business limited use. And then the Track 3 that you see on the screen is proposed for limited office limited use.
Okay, sorry. I just had to get more confused.
That's okay. Yes, and also, these tracks are definitely not, do not line up with the original Sunny Knoll tracks, which were originally on the site plan, but we're getting that ironed out. But the conditions for this yellow, this lighter color, are actually called Track 2. It includes a pedestrian path that would go through there, so it'll make more sense to you, but if I just mention that there's a couple of tributaries that go through there, and that's why the wording I'm getting ready to read is staged that way, to kind of work around those ravines, if you will. But apologize about that, and good catch on that. Okay, the North Suburban Area Plan update does recommend office for the properties on the west side of Silas Creek Parkway. We certainly are aware of that. Again, we feel like that was predominantly reflective of the current zoning request, of the current zoning of that property being general office. But recognizing that this is really a very broad 27-acre rezoning request covering both sides of Silas Creek Parkway, we feel like it's a reasonable trade, because you're basically downzoning some property and intensifying the zoning of some other property. And really, it results in a net decrease of commercial square footage, a significant net decrease. As I mentioned earlier, in 1988, you had 250,000 square feet of retail that was approved that has not been built. About half of that property has been downzoned for the Liberty Healthcare, but that condition is still out there, if that was theoretically possible, to build on the remaining portion that's zoned GBS. The current request, including the site plan and the 20,000 square feet on the east side that I mentioned of Silas Creek Parkway, comes to a total of 90,700 square feet. And so that's about 160,000 square feet less of retail than what was originally approved in 1988. So that's why staff feels comfortable about this proposed request. Just briefly, in traffic, as a result of that reduced square footage, the potential decrease in anticipated trips. Now, obviously, once this development takes place, there's going to be an increase in traffic. The property is wooded now. There's obviously going to be an increase in traffic, but the anticipated increase is significantly less, from 13,300 trips a day to a little over 9,700 trips a day, based, again, on the reduced square footage there of the retail uses that I mentioned earlier. Again, the western portion proposed for GBS is comprehensive development with coordinated access, stormwater management, and common lighting and landscaping. Also, the common lighting and landscaping, that would apply to the portion on the east side of Silas Creek Parkway as well. The site plan, as I mentioned earlier, provides a 75-foot wide tree save area and a 25-foot planted buffer yard for a total of 100 feet along the western property to minimize impacts to the residents on Greencrest Drive. And the additional conditions include lighting half-foot kennel, as I mentioned, at the property line along public streets. That's adjacent to residential property lines. 65% brick of the exterior walls and screening of all rooftop HVAC equipment from public streets, and decorative fencing in columns. I failed to mention that earlier on the site plan. At the entrance there, kind of bookend at the intersection of Silas Creek and Fairlawn would be a three-foot tall decorative aluminum fence, black aluminum fence with brick columns to kind of frame in that intersection and unify that development. That would also need to be constructed at the entrance on the eastern side of Silas Creek, and that's in the conditions. And then limited signage, as I mentioned earlier. So staff recommendation is for approval, and the site plan meets year-to-year requirements. I do want to just briefly go over the proposed revised conditions that you have before you. Under prior issuance of grading permits, you can see we're striking through sidewalk along Silas Creek Parkway, north of Fairlawn Drive, as I mentioned earlier. Then down under, prior to building permits condition D, they just wanted some more flexibility in requiring a cross-access agreement, doing it as documents rather than a plat. Under prior to issuance of occupancy permits, this is where I mentioned earlier about that eight-foot-wide path being constructed, actually a paved hard-surface trail between all the properties up to the Liberty Healthcare Site. So it just, it talks about the wording. The wording there just talks about the timing of that being constructed in regard to the development of Track 2, and again, not Track 3. And then just some flexibility on landscaping. Still would be common landscaping throughout the development. They had a specific type of Schumard oak specified, and just inserted the word "or comparable variety." And we're certainly comfortable with that, as long as it's still consistent throughout the development. And the same for the type of hollies for the shrubs. And we just took out that wording there. The required number of street yard shrubs shall be double for the entire subject property because we already had that in the previous condition. And finally, again, just "or comparable variety" on the last page under condition D, Princeton Elms for the motor vehicle surface area plantings, comparable variety. So fairly minor changes for the most part on those conditions, but still important. So anyway, again, staff does recommend approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions of staff at this time?
Yeah, I had a question. Just to be clear, there is a requirement for a double row of shrubs?
That's right. All street yard shrubs on both sides of Silas Creek Parkway.
Okay. And in the approved plan that was done in 2001, where were the access points? I mean, is there any change in the access in this new proposal?
I would need to check that plan. I'm not positive.
What I was really questioning was the access on to Silas Creek Parkway, you know, in all of the tracks. Were there always going to be access on to Silas Creek?
No, there was not an access point on Silas Creek Parkway. There might have been two on the Fairlawn Drive, but there was no access on Silas Creek Parkway.
Any other questions of staff at this time?
Yeah, let me, if I could. So we've got sidewalks on both sides here that hopefully will feed the multiple apartments. I guess over 1,000 units of apartments within a quarter of a mile of there easily, right? On Fairlawn, is the city looking at crossing that at any point? How do people get across from, instance, a grocery store to the convenience store or transverse Fairlawn in there?
Well, you know, certainly at this time, there's no crosswalk there at the intersection of Fairlawn and Silas Creek Parkway, and I don't believe that's going to be required to be installed at this time. Sidewalks would be required to be installed, perhaps down the road if something's developed on the eastern side of Silas Creek Parkway, and that intersection is redone or restriped. There may be a crosswalk there. As far as mid-block, yeah, I can't speak for City DOT staff. They are not present today, but I certainly wouldn't see something mid-block on Fairlawn going from between the two sites.
Okay, well, and what I'm talking about is between the three sites, actually, you know, north, south, and east-west in there. So would that end up being the city's responsibility or a developer's responsibility to put crosswalks in to move people to the sidewalks that the developer's putting in?
Yeah, I should probably defer to the State DOT staff. Stephen Jones is here because Silas Creek Parkway is within the city, but it is a state-maintained facility, and they had to grant all the access there. So he may be able to speak a little bit better about the potential of having a pedestrian crossing there than I would.
And then, if I'm looking at this picture right, there is- And then, if I'm looking at this picture right, there is access on that north, what is it, north Track One, from, what is it, Crown Point Drive up there? So people can come from that whole northern region into that grocery store there, right? Without having to get on Fairlawn?
That's correct.
Or they can run through the back of all those developments in there?
That's correct. This is a short little public street stub that goes into those apartments, and so these people would be able to go through there directly into the shopping center.
Is there access further back from those apartments to the other apartments in the Pine Ridge and all of that in there?
No, no, there's no access.
Is there any way to do that?
I doubt vehicular-wise, and it's probably about a 15- or foot difference between this site and the site over here. I mean, nothing's proposed from a pedestrian standpoint either. I guess that's something that maybe, that you could, you know, that could be suggested to the developer.
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out a way. I mean, there's a, it looks like that area is going to be a destination point for shoppers, for retail of all kinds with this development, and how to navigate that without constantly having to get back out on Ranolda, which is problematic at best sometimes, particularly if you're at the north part trying to go south and cross two lanes in the middle in there, trying to figure out how to get customers down in there. And then the stormwater's going to be handled by the stormwater management? So the details on that?
Yes, they have the standard stormwater condition for managing the quality and quantity of the development. Let's see here. This... So this entrance right here, they are showing the sidewalk. It comes around here now into the development, and these residents would certainly be able to walk into here. There's not a sidewalk on that side. Perhaps that could be considered, but a lot of that is, you know, off-site on this property here, just that short segment there, you know. But they could access this development without having to go on to Fairlawn. But they're proposing a retaining wall back here, and I just don't know if that's going to be doable to connect.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. First person signed up as proponent, Doug Stemmel.
Mr. Chairman, members of planning board, good afternoon. Doug Stemmel with Stemmel Associates, 601 North Trade Street, Suite 200, Winston-Salem 27101. Happy to be here today representing the petitioner and the developer, and would like to walk you through this exciting project. The Sunny Knoll property has been, excuse me, proposed to be retail, shopping center, office, and multifamily since 1998. That's 27 years ago, excuse me, 1988, 27 years ago. So this property's been proposed, has been on the tax rolls for a long time to be developed at a very high level of development. The rezoning that we're bringing to you today with the three tracks is basically a repositioning of already approved uses within the Sunny Knoll development. As you look at this plan, you can see the three tracks in yellow. I won't take responsibility for track numbering and staff reporting of what numbers are what, but there's three tracks there, and I'll go through them. And basically, the density and intensity of this development and Sunny Knoll that was envisioned way back in 1988 has not and will not ever come to fruition at that level of development at any time. So there's been a lot less development. As you look at this slide, you can see down to the south in this area, you have a funeral home, you have Brighton Gardens, a retirement community, you have Wells Fargo, which has about 16 employees at peak time, and you have the Liberty Healthcare. So you have nothing on your screen?
Nothing we can see.
That might be a challenge.
Thank you.
Some of them do, some of them don't.
So you have a lot of very light intensity uses, a much less intensity than was originally envisioned on this property. Three tracks proposed today on our request results in a reduction in a lot of different things. One is traffic, that's noted in your staff report. So even with the rezoning request that there's a lot less traffic, as Gary said, I believe he said there's 154,000 square feet less retail. If you look at the three tracks individually, it's about 112,000 overall less, 6.12 acres less of retail on these three tracks than what was already approved. And there's less impervious surface. So we've been interested in stormwater management and being aware of the environment and what goes on, and the rules have changed substantially since 1988. So a lot less impervious is better. And one of our neighborhoods, before we even developed this property, further to the north that drains into the Methabra area, we're trying to be sensitive to what goes in there. So less impervious, less parking is a good thing. On the site plan, I want to walk you through a few things. On the south side, which is this area here, south side of Fairlawn, that was originally proposed for 75,000 square feet and a four-story office building on that piece. What we're proposing is less intensive, it's a reduction. It's approximately 25,300 square feet. It's retail, so we understand that use is a little more intensive than office, but it's significantly less than the square footage and the height that is already approved on that property. Today, by right, there's over, up to 300 parking spaces can go just on this tract alone. What we're proposing is a reduction to 185 parking spaces and also only one-story building. So we're trying to be sensitive to the neighborhood in terms of what's going on in that area. You might ask, why are we switching from office to retail in that area? I would say that market demand, 27 years' worth of trying, and no buyers. Nobody's interested in the office market at this location. So with all of the reductions, we feel that a reduction in overall square footage and all the items I just mentioned is a reasonable request. We've included a lot of common landscaping. Gary touched on that, along the front. We volunteered double the amount of shrubs along the frontage. We volunteered brick columns to frame and create consistency on all sides and entrances. So there are a lot of things that were volunteered to make this a quality development. Architectural elements, we submitted brick samples or brick options so that on all these three tracks that are developed, there'll be consistent materials, consistent lighting, consistent landscaping to give it a cohesive look as we go through it. On the west side is where we have sensitivity, and I know our neighbors are here from Greencrest. The original proposal that was approved had a 75-foot undisturbed buffer. It's heavily wooded. We're maintaining that 75-foot undisturbed buffer. We're also adding a 25-foot landscape buffer, Type III, of new planting to further enhance the screen. And in addition to that, I'm going to get into a fence option that we talked about with the neighbors. This shows the buffer a little bit more in detail, a blow-up of that area. So the area here, here are the neighbors on Greencrest. This is the 75-foot undisturbed tree buffer that will remain, 25 feet, and then the red line is a six-foot chain-link fence that we proposed and volunteered after meeting with the neighbors that were concerned about security. And I'll explain a little bit more about that in a minute as well. So buffering-wise, I'll show you a cross-section. If you look on the left-hand side, this is the green, the closest home to the development. So this is Mr. Jim Clayton. He's here today. We met with him. This is his house, and there's about 100 feet to the back property line that's primarily all wooded. And then you have the 75-foot undisturbed buffer, and then the additional 25-foot landscape buffer, and then what we're proposing is a six-foot chain-link fence at this location so that anybody from the buildings here would see that and be discouraged to come down into the low ravine and back up, because I think they're concerned about security. So we're trying to be responsive to that, that concern. You have to hike down a ravine. It's steep, comes back up and around. I think by putting the fence on the higher end, it would help make them feel like they have more of a backyard and a buffer maintained there by putting the fence up further into our site. As we always do, we have neighborhood meeting, and we always invite more people than we're required to by code. If you'll take a look, this is a neighborhood exhibit. Here's the three tracks. The Old Town Edgbrook Neighborhood, we invited approximately 80 households to the neighborhood meeting. We set up two separate neighborhood meetings, one for them and one for the Greencrest Neighborhood, which is approximately, is that 20, 23? 23 households. So we sent notices out to all of them, invited them to come learn more about the plans, and at that meeting, we only had one household attend from the Greencrest Neighborhood. In addition to that, we followed up with more phone calls. I actually contacted people that we know are very active down here in this area. We contacted the gentleman that dealt with the Nature Conservancy that took over property, and we talked to Martha Wood, invited her to come in and see the plans, have called her several times to come in and explain drainage, stormwater, and what we were doing to manage all of that. We also, with the Greencrest Neighborhood, those four homes that abut us right here, we want to be sensitive to what their concerns are. We tried to get in touch with them. We had a very good meeting with Mr. Clayton, his mother-in-law, who is here, Mrs. Ely, and they were very pleasant, came to our office, and their concern was security. I believe their granddaughter's here today, and so we understood that. And our petitioner volunteered, I said, what is the main thing you're concerned about that we could help you with the proposal? And they said, security and a fence. So we proposed a six-foot chain-link fence to help soften that, and then we sent an exhibit to them, and they in turn asked for a 10-foot fence with barbed wire on it. We can't put barbed wire on it due to liability, and I think six-foot is pretty reasonable in terms of what we're doing. So we're willing to work with them, and we tried to follow up and discuss that. There are a lot of them here today. But we are willing to work with them, as we already have, and we're, would like to volunteer the condition of approximately 500 feet plus of six-foot fence. So we'd like to volunteer that as a condition, and happy to continue to work with the neighborhood as we go on to city council as well, and be happy to answer any of your questions. But I'd like you to keep in mind that everything in this proposal is less intense than what was originally approved, and we're trying to be sensitive, and this site's been on the market for 27 years. So there's only so much we can do to ever take the current tax base and keep and build on it, so we're trying to do that. Have to answer any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Stemmel? Yes?
Yeah. One aspect of this proposal that seems to me to be more intense than was originally approved is the use of automobile repair and maintenance that you're adding to Track One, which wasn't part of the original GBS. And just wondering if, I mean, I think that's somewhat intense to put next to a single-family residential neighborhood.
It would be like advanced auto, AutoZone-type use in the retail to be allowed in that area.
In that 4,000-square-foot retail building? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's not meant to be maintenance and cars stacked up out there or anything like that. That's not that definition of that use. And staff may be able to help out on that.
Can I seek further clarification? I mean, what were the, what were the named brands that you mentioned?
AutoZone.
Because those are considered retail. I mean, are you talking like Jiffy Lube or something like that, like Quick Lube, Express Lube? I mean, that would be, those would be considered motor vehicle repair and maintenance, but it wouldn't rise to the level of, say, you know, someone who's actually doing automobile repair.
So there's another category that's not on the list that's the more intense uses?
Well, the way the, the way the condition G under other requirements is written, it says, "Use of motor vehicle repair and maintenance shall be further limited to allow no inoperable vehicles, outdoor repair vehicles, no outdoor display of goods and materials." But if the applicant is willing to further limit themselves, you could also say no repair of vehicles. Like a Jiffy Lube, I don't believe really offers repairs. They might replace a bulb, but they're pretty much changing oil. So that's, that could be a further limitation if you so desire.
I think an AutoZone changes your windshield wipers and things like that.
But that's the kind of automobile business that you're envisioning there?
Yes, as an option.
So is the petitioner willing to have that condition, that no repair would be allowed?
Yeah, I think defining repair is a little bit tricky in terms of is a change in your windshield wiper considered a repair by inspections?
No, because again, that's viewed as a service. If you go to AutoZone currently, which is not considered motor vehicle repair and maintenance, is considered a retail store. If you go there now, they will change your battery, they will change your wiper blades, but it's not considered automotive repair. That's more of a service that they offer to their customers.
Is like an Express Oil place allowed?
I mean, again, under the use of motor vehicle repair and maintenance, yes. You know, the same kind of thing. I'm sure they would offer those same services as part of their inspection, but what we're talking about is not pulling motors, not changing, you know, not changing tires. They may rotate tires, not doing bodywork, not doing, you know, the heavy-type things. But I mean, an Express Lube or a Quick Lube or anything like that, I believe, would fall within the context of the way the condition is written.
The petitioner would be happy to add excluding the use of repair as defined.
Any other questions of Mr. Stemmel at this time? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Seeing none, then we'll turn to the opposition. I'll remind you, we have a total of 12 minutes, and there's six or seven of you have signed up, so you need to be considerate of your neighbor's time. Mr. Pillsbury is the first person to sign up.
Yes, my name is Dave Pillsbury. I live at 26 Thodoon Greencrest Drive. It's Winston-Salem 27106. My property backs up to the Wells Fargo Data Center. We've lived in the house since 1978, and I've been asked by my neighbors on Greencrest Drive to speak on their behalf since I have knowledge of the history of the Sunny Knoll Development Master Plan, or perhaps I should say so-called Master Plan, since the rezoning request before you today undermines and overturns the agreement brokered and approved by the Board of Alderman in 1988 between our greater residential area, not just Greencrest, but Polo Road, Great Myrtle Circle, you know, all around down there, Old Town Road, the developer at the time, which was Starmount, and the landowners. I rise to express concern not only about the site plan for Sunny Knoll Tracks Four, Five, and Eight, but perhaps, as, or more importantly, a process that had put our neighborhood on the defensive to uphold the approved Sunny Knoll development plan that we thought was law. My objection begins with the first sentence of the staff report. Might as well get it right out there. That states that the track references of the subject properties are not the original Sunny Knoll track references, but have been relabeled for this rezoning request. Sunny Knoll's Tracks Four and Eight on either side of Fairlawn Drive are now arbitrarily combined and called Track One on the overview documents sent to area residents and, I believe, on the website. The apparent justification for this is that the two parcels are moving in the same rezoning direction, but Track Four and Eight are clearly referenced on the printed site plan. This inconsistency is confusing and potentially misleading to those members of the public who are familiar with the Sunny Knoll development. The Track One... The Track One parcel in the north of Fairlon has been known as Track Eight for over 25 years, minus the carve-out. And likewise, the Track One parcel on the south side of Fairlon is, next to our neighborhood, has been Track Four, minus the carve-out for Wells Fargo Data Center. But there is potentially a more terrible consequence. Linking, linking the two tracks may dilute our opportunity, the neighborhood's ability, to file a sufficient protest petition since it must be, must apply to more area than just the track behind us. I understand that this question is being reviewed by the city attorney, but I have that sinking feeling that the decision will not be in the neighborhood's favor. And I have just received today a reply from the city attorney prior to this meeting that our worst fears have been realized, that any protest petition submitted by the Greencrest homeowners will be insufficient to meet the 5% threshold since the entire 25 acres are lumped together. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the site plan, and I do appreciate the time Gary Roberts spent with me explaining the details of the site plan and safe recommendation. The proposed buildings located closest to Rinaldo Road on Fairlon Drive, as you have heard, pose the greatest risk to our neighborhood as far as, and the owners at the end of the street have expressed legitimate concern about their security. Location of dumpsters, another major concern. In spite of the city ordinance prohibiting trash collection before 6:00 p.m., we are regularly awakened at 4:30 and 5:00 a.m. as trucks empty dumpsters in the office park on Polo Road. This is the real Sunny Knoll Track One, and this disturbance will be much risk with the Track Four proposed rezoning. We understand that Sheets will be the tenant of the corner property, will have a 24-hour operation with the associated all-hours noise and traffic, and is shovel-ready as soon as the rezoning is approved. Will the Sheets look like the one on Country Club and Meadow Lock Roads, or will it look like the more conventional and commercial-looking sheets at Walkertown Shopping Center and along other major highways? The gasoline storage tanks are located on the property line with the Wells Fargo Data Center. Security and protection from terrorist attack are huge concerns for this financial facility. I recall that Wachovia Bank, which built these data center originally, expected this facility to be in a low-profile office park. Has anyone spoken with Wells Fargo about their concerns? Continuing the Wells Fargo discussion, and representatives are here from Wells Fargo today. Gary told me that he had encouraged the petitioners to contact Wells Fargo, but had no information whether that had occurred. I have the data center's security number, took it upon myself to contact them today. The security supervisor whom I spoke with in the building had no knowledge about the rezoning. I subsequently received a call this afternoon from Lisa Adams, Wells Fargo Regional Protocol Manager for this area. And until my call today, her expectation was that the data center would be part of an office complex. She knew nothing about the rezoning request for a gas station or the outbuildings along Fairlon Drive, has concerns for their facility, and I referred her to Gary for the site plan and information. So this is actually a pretty significant lapse, I think, on the part of the petitioner not to contact a resource of such importance in our community about the impact of this proposal. I'm going to skip over a lot of this, a lot of time for others. So what is it? Do we have a planning process where approved master plans are routinely bent and twisted to accommodate individual rezoning requests? Or do we have a more orderly process where zoning requests generally conform to a community vision and approved development, and approved development plans such as the Sunny Knoll Agreement and the Northern Suburban Area Plan, which I do not know that much about? I favor the latter approach, of course, but recognize that there can be changed conditions that override an existing plan. However, the staff report answered no to the question, "Have changing," quote, "Have changing conditions substantially affected the area in the petition?" So I'm not quite sure. The city council will ultimately decide whether to uphold, abandon, or amend the existing Sunny Knoll Development Plan. The bottom line, as I see it, is that our neighborhood seeks a solution that balances the petitioner's right to develop this property in a reasonable way with protection for our neighborhood and now protection for the data center without setting aside this hard-fought agreement. This site plan does not get us there. It is my recommendation that consideration of this proposed rezoning be deferred until the city council decides the fate of the Sunny Knoll Development Plan and Northern Suburban Area Plan. I yield, I'd like to yield to Sunny Knoll. We can have, we have Wells Fargo next.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Sharon Brooks, and I'm a vice president for Wells Fargo. I manage the data center that is currently in the location that was just spoken of. I received this information two hours ago.
Excuse me, Ms. Brooks, give us your address, please.
It is the 100, my home address or my work address? It's 100 Sunny Knoll Court, where the data center is at.
Thank you.
Okay. As I said, I received this information two hours ago. I partner with the Wells Fargo Corporate Properties Organization. Lisa is also here to speak to the property side of it. With regard to the data center, I thought it was interesting that Mr. Stimmel mentioned the amount of employees that are at the data center. It's really not about the amount of employees that are at the data center. It's about what is contained in the data center. This is a Tier Four facility. Wells Fargo has three core data centers, one in Minneapolis, one in Alabama, and one here in Winston-Salem. We house, what we refer to as Tier One applications. That would be something like your checking account, your savings account, your mortgage. We serve as one in three U.S. households throughout the USA. So as you can imagine, if anything would occur, say, on the Sheets property with the gas tanks or something to that nature, that could have impact to the data center. Also, we are very regulated, as you're very well aware, between the FCC, the OCC. There are very specific regulations about what we can be close to and how we tier our applications and what can reside within the data center. So I have concerns that this can alter our five-year plan. We do have plans currently underway to bring additional applications and services into the data center from other Wells Fargo locations, and this could alter that plan. So thank you very much. Anyone have questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. We'll turn it to Lisa.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Adams, and I'm with Wells Fargo, a vice president as well, and I'm the regional portfolio manager for the Carolinas.
Again, ma'am, we need your address, please, for the record.
Certainly. 100 Sunny Knoll Court, the same as Sharon. I'm here today, I found out about this at 2:00 today from Mr. Pillsbury, so I appreciate the phone call. We were not, unfortunately, invited to any of the meetings that were described earlier today, so we were unaware of this development. When I spoke to the previous owner, I was told that this would be an office development, that there would not be gas stations or retail. Our concern, after seeing the site plan today, is with the gas station. If you look at the storage tanks, those storage tanks are on our property line. That is right next to 956 gallons of condensing water storage for us, as well as, we also have 90,000 gallons of fuel stored at our site for 80 watts of generated power. So when you look at the possibility of explosion and what it could do to our Tier Four data center, that's catastrophic to our financial community. Again, as Sharon had mentioned, this particular data center is a Tier Four data center. It is the highest level of risk to our bank. If we lose this data center, we impact one in three Americans. That means ATM machines, checking accounts. You can imagine the devastation. So we have not had an opportunity to check with the OCC, the Federal Reserve. We have no idea at this point what impact we're going to have from a regulation standpoint. So having only two hours to respond to this, we have not had a chance to speak with our legal, our outside counsel. We have had, not had that responsibility yet to do that, or the opportunity to do that. So we are opposing this because of the late notice to Wells Fargo and the fact that we had plenty of opportunities to be notified. We're, we want to be a good community neighbor. We are, we're not opposed to the, the development. We're opposed to the fact that we're, we're putting in a risk next to our data center, and we have no idea what that impact's going to be to our corporation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Adams.
Sir?
There was mention in the previous person that there were, what, three other sites in the United States or two other?
Well, there's, there's four core data centers. We talk about core data centers. We have, that is our highest tier level of data center, where our highest risk of applications are located. And that is, they're located in Alabama, Winston-Salem, as well as in Minneapolis.
And do you have familiarity with these sites and, and the types of neighbors or types of businesses that are close to them?
Yes, so they are all freestanding, and there are some that have development, but they don't have the risk, where the risk that we have now is with the gas station. That is our highest risk.
Okay, so the other sites don't have this. Is the West End Center one of those?
No.
It isn't. That's a different tier.
It is a data center? Yes, it is a data center, but is not tiered at the level as a Silas Center.
Okay. Okay.
Now, I understand, so you had gas stored as well?
Yes, sir. We have 90,000 gallons of underground storage tanks as well. And again, we have 956 gallons of, of water that's stored for condenser water. That is very close to where the proposed underground tanks are for the gas station. As well as that, we have two water feeds that's right in the location of those two water feeds. And we also share the detention pond. The detention pond that we maintain is actually on the proposed site, and we have a legal document where we are to maintain that. There's been no communication of how that will impact this legal document. So we have concerns on that as well. And as well as the employees, I'd like to clarify that. We have a total of 40 employees during first shift, approximately 25 employees on second, approximately 25 employees on third, and we are 24/7, so we have weekend shifts as well. So that does not include any vendors that we have to, to the site to repair. So I'd like to clarify that as well.
While, while you're up there, does staff have some thoughts about this shared responsibility for retention or?
And it's detention, yes, it is.
What is it?
It's a detention.
Detention?
Yes, sir.
Is there something that, you know where that's located and everything?
Yeah, it's currently almost like, Gary, can you maybe?
You'd point that out?
We can contractually obligate a party to maintain a detention pond on someone else's property when you do a subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not uncommon to have a shared stormwater facility.
But in the current agreement, even though it is not on our property, we maintain that detention pond.
That's the detention.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Wells Fargo should have received a letter, right?
Yeah, I kind of wanted to speak to that.
Okay.
The way it works, whenever we do this, is we select, we send letters to everybody within 500 feet of the site. And the data that we use is the data that's on file at the county tax office. The listed owner for this property is Wachovia Bank in a P.O. Box 2609 Carlsbad, California. That's where the letter went. So you guys outside of this might want to go to the tax office and, and update that information.
We contacted our legal counsel internal today, and they were researching exactly where that notification could have been.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
More questions? Thank you.
Okay. Randall, is it real? Reese, I'm sorry.
My name is Randall Reese. I live in Rural Hall, North Carolina, 755 Bethany Rural Hall Road. I'm representing Norma J. Grody. She is my mother-in-law, and she's lived at 2661 Greencrest Drive since 1963. She would be here today, but she does have several health issues that prevented her from attending. There's several questions that should and need to be addressed here today by the board in reference to the rezoning request for properties located on or about Silas Creek Parkway and Fairlon Drive, also known as Sunny Knoll. There is and has been since 1988 a binding agreement, a covenant between the city of Winston-Salem and the neighborhoods and businesses in and around the Sunny Knoll project on the specific uses of the tracts of land in question here today. What needs to be clarified is, what are the ramifications involved in changing an accord that has been in effect for over 25 years? Does that not carry the weight of law? This was negotiated in good faith and agreed to by all parties involved, so why at this time is it a good time to undo a very thoroughly organized and thought-through plan? I have several other issues here. Why were the tracks in question, as has been pointed out already by council member? Why were they renumbered? They were numbered in the original plan, and the numbering has been changed, if not once, at least once during this period. Actually, I think there was two changes made, and they've since penciled that in, the three, the two, the two, the one. Used to be four, used to be eight. It's very confusing, and anybody who looks at the site plans would have a very difficult time in figuring out exactly what they're talking about, as was pointed out by council member. So we, it needs to be clarified, because a normal layperson would not be able to figure this out. One of the other problems that I wanted to bring up was the security issues, which Wells Fargo has pointed out, reference to its data center, which is adjacent just south of the proposed Sheets convenience store and gas station. The gasoline pumps and tanks on the backside of the property are in close proximity to the data center. Please note that the data center has double fencing, thick walls of reinforced concrete, a military-style iron gate in the front on both sides that is raised when not, that is raised continuously when not allowing vehicles entry to the compound. They also have multiple security personnel. This is, being truthful, one of the most secure, security-conscious locations in the county. I believe that they would at least have some concerns, which they have voiced, concerning the number of gallons of gasoline and diesel that are going to be stored directly adjacent to their location. Also, there are environmental impact requirements and precautions for possible accidents, spills, and God forbid, a terrorist attack of some kind. This request puts dangerous liquids in close proximity to several neighborhood homes, as well as the businesses previously noted. Also, the business Sheets will be 24-hour location. Additional noise level, pollution levels will be increased dramatically over what they are now.
Sure, wrap up. We've exceeded the time by about two minutes.
Yes. Okay. Clearly, if you have looked at this request, there is one driving factor in the motion for this change, and the zoning request for these properties, and that would be site prep. The existing zoning on the original tracks would require major site prep involving backfilling and extensive portion of that property. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. We have used all the time, we do have two other folks signed up, James Clayton and Carolyn Ely. If you, I'll leave each of them a minute if you'd like to, if you have something you'd like to add that hasn't been said.
My name is James Clayton. I live at 2691 Greencrest Drive. We'd be the house at the very end of Greencrest, so it'd be the closest to the proposed facility. And I believe it's been covered pretty, pretty well, our concerns as far as security. The fence they talked about, I don't feel sufficient. It doesn't really, would prevent anybody from just walking around and, you know, cutting through our neighborhood. So those are our main concerns, the security. Our property values will definitely take a hit. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ely, would you like to speak?
Thank you, sir, and I couldn't help but smile. I used to tell my principal that I would like to talk to him a minute, and he one time said, "When have you ever just taken one minute to say something?" So I'm, I'm going to just drop everything I had about, but I, I've got involved in this, and I am Carolyn Ely, 3129 Monarch Drive. I am not on Greencrest, but I am a grandmother. And for those of you that have children or grandchildren, you know that you're always concerned about their security. And that's really why I got involved in this issue, because I'm most concerned not only of our own grandchild, but the other kids that live on this street. This is a wonderful street. It's a mixed street, and I think every, every neighborhood should have that. We have kids on that street that are from probably a few months old up until the people that have a little bit of age on me. And so that's a wonderful type of neighborhood to be in. Why would anyone want to destroy a neighborhood like this? And I heard people talk about, it's a clean swap. It's a clean swap according to, well, it depends on who's making that decision, whether it's a clean swap. The type of traffic that is generated from an office is quite different from a type of traffic that's generated from a business. From a business standpoint, it's going to be quite, from this little block buildings that they're going From a business standpoint, it's going to be quite, from this little block buildings that they're going to have, it's going to be undesirable, much more undesirable type of traffic than it would be for the other as far as security is concerned, cutting through and whatever. It would be great if we lived in Mayberry, where there was never any kind of problem. But we don't live in Mayberry, and we don't live in Lake Wobegon. Robberies occur. And when they occur, they can come right straight through where all these people live, on this wonderful street. So that's a major concern. One other thing, sir.
Your principal was right.
May I just make one other statement? I was coming home from volunteering today down at the soup kitchen, and I decided that I was going to just run around the neighborhood for a few minutes in the car. Every corner has gas stations on it. You look at all these little Pizza Hut, McDonald's. It goes on and on and on, on every corner. Just yesterday, a new Harry's Teter opened up right on Fairlawn. Right across the street is Lowe's. How many grocery stores do we need in this area? What we're doing is, we're taking this area and we're putting these little boxes all around, and we're going to have one of the most choppy-looking neighborhoods around. So I urge you to take all of this in consideration. Thank you very much for giving this grandma time to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Stimmel, I'm going to give you about three more minutes if you'd like. If you need any more time, just be fair and balanced.
Just a couple of clarifications. We're happy to meet with Wells Fargo and talk to them about the details and see if we can reach agreement that might be reasonable and what their concerns are, if we can move tanks, shift things, et cetera. On the stormwater issue, we know they have clear title to that on the property. And we can either store it underground or have a separate stormwater pond, or we can work with them however they choose to. If they choose not to work with us in a joint manner, then we have room to do it on our own and meet all of the stormwater regulations. So either way, we're happy to try to work that out, talk to them, and see if we can reach common ground on that as we move forward to city council. One thing I would state is that the amount of gallons stored on-site, a typical convenience store would have about 60,000 gallons on-site as compared to 90,000 at their site, so. And we are 20 feet below their grade, so in terms of drainage to and from where that location is, the convenience store, we will sit well below the height of their building. We won't be draining anything towards them or et cetera. So I did want to clarify that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I now declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, we can just address one thing. This is a mapping numbering issue here. This is not staff's intent to deceive anybody or confuse anybody. The petitioners, the folks that you heard from are right. Those are old Sunny Knoll tract numbers, four, five, and eight. When we put this location map together, we felt it was more reasonable just to start out with one, two, and three, a logical numbering pattern just for this zoning request, because when we have to describe this, put in a special use district permit, put it in ordinance, we felt it made more sense on this location map to start with one, two, three than to start randomly with four, five, and eight on a map. So that's where that came from. It wasn't trying to confuse anybody by any means, but that's the rationale for why you see what you see.
Can I ask a question about that, Erin? One of the points that was brought up was there was an inability to get enough signatures for a protest petition by combining these two as one tract. Is that because they were originally a single lot or?
I'd probably want to.
Jerry's here.
Yeah, I'd let our city attorney staff talk, but speak to that.
Good evening. If I'm understanding your question correctly, is the question more pointed to what the tracts were labeled? In other words, the answer, if I'm understanding your question correctly, whether you numbered each lot a separate number, in other words, the two-track ones, if you had numbered them one, two, three, four versus a one and a one, the net result is the same. In other words, the rezoning is the combination of all of the parcels. So the buffer area would be the same regardless of how you numbered or labeled the lots.
Or how you combine tracks, which is the real question I think you're asking. The combination of tracks does not increase the difficulty of getting enough signatures to file a protest petition? I'm asking a question.
The combination?
Yes.
Certainly, if only one property was before you to be rezoned, then the area would be much smaller. So it does affect the ability to get a qualified protest petition. But you have to work with the rezoning request that's before you today. Therefore, the 100-foot buffer area would be drawn around all of the parcels.
But you're saying that the petitioner has the right to combine the two for the purpose of the rezoning?
In other words, the.
Track four, track eight.
And I can maybe speak to this. They brought this in as one request. One application, one site plan, one fee, one docket number. So for us, it's one request total, and that's the way we've processed it. And that's, I think, what Jerry's speaking to with respect to the protest petition boundaries.
And to clarify even further, in other words, your decision or recommendation will be on the request as a whole. In other words, you would not be able to parse it out and say, "Well, I'd recommend approval of this tract to be rezoned as requested, denial of this, approval of this, denial of this." It would be one decision. So if, in theory, you had trouble with one particular tract, which would prevent you from moving forward, then in theory, you would recommend the denial of the whole. So you're making a decision on the whole rather than on each component part.
And if the whole tract had come in with the old Sunny Knoll numbers, as opposed to these numbers, nothing would change as far as protest petition.
Correct. The boundary would still be the entire parcel.
Is the contract that's been referred to a couple of times just the agreement that we reach at the end of these rezoning requests? Or is it an actual non-development agreement written, signed by the original developer and adjacent landowners?
I am not privy to that. When I hear it, I assume it was just the decision made by.
The ordinance in the docket is the standard rezoning ordinance. There's nothing recorded.
If there is any other agreement, it would be outside of the rezoning process, and I'm not aware of any such agreement.
So the net result of that obviously is properties have the ability to be rezoned once they're rezoned once. That doesn't necessarily fix them in perpetuity.
Mr. Chairman, I was drawn into the security issues of another data center here in Forsyth County and really began to understand some of those issues and how careful the planning had to be around that. And I don't feel comfortable trying to make a decision on this without them working out something prior to this. I am so proud of the fact that Wells Fargo and Wachovia cited that data center here, and it said a lot about this area in terms of tornadoes and other things that go on. And I think it's a real important part of the development of this area, and it encourages other people. And I wouldn't want to jeopardize that just because the two parties haven't had an opportunity to discuss some of these issues that are there. Is it appropriate to move for a continuance on something this, to give them to do that process? And then we would be able to move on before the city council deals with this?
We can sort of ask the petitioner, Mr. Stimmel. He said they could, they would meet between now and council, but I'm like you, I'd like to hear something.
Get it cleaned up before then.
Yeah, yeah.
And Jerry, don't go too far. I have a question for you.
We would prefer to meet with Wells Fargo, continue to move forward. And if we don't resolve it, you know, there's city council that still votes on it, et cetera. I'm hopeful that we can reach some sort of an agreement that works for everybody, would be our goal. But if we continue it, does that mean the public hearing is over and then we?
No, the public hearing, of course, I'm concerned the public hearing would be over, that one issue. Are there any other issues you'd like resolved before it came back to us or?
I think that's the big issue for me in terms of just being able to make a decision on it, yeah.
Same for me, actually. Y'all got the same concern.
We would not go through another public hearing. I think we'd like. And, you know, I guess it wouldn't be unreasonable for us to continue this to our work session for two weeks and let them work out something. We could take action at the work session, to save you a month if that would.
What date is that?
28.
28? That wouldn't.
We would be amenable to that and try to work with Wells Fargo. I would also like to work with the neighborhood on the fence and make sure we're doing the best we can. I don't know if we can come to an agreement on it, but we'll try.
Okay.
So Wells Fargo is shaking their heads affirmative that that would give you enough time?
We have audit coming in, so you're saying 28? That's not going to do it. We're going to have a whole week where we have auditors in. We're not going to be able to sit down. So if we have more time, it's just we didn't know about it.
That's between you and your legal department in California somewhere. I mean, sorry, I'm sorry, but, you know.
We're looking into that, agree, but we think we're right next door. We might have heard something, but we have.
Well, there's signs out there as well, so, but.
Today, they were up, you're right.
How long have the signs been up?
The signs were posted.
I don't want to debate. It was in April, because we drove by them during the site.
During the site fact, so what was that, roughly two weeks ago?
28th, 29th.
Whatever that Monday was.
Well, we know we sent a required notice.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it had to be up by the 29th. I think they were up a day or two before that.
Your next public hearing meeting is the 11th.
June 11th, yes.
Personally, I would still give them two weeks, and we can still vote on it at work session. If they haven't decided anything, we can make a decision at that time. And so if it's important to them to meet with them, they'll meet with them. I think.
Well, I'd maybe we continue it to the 28th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Little, and that's agreeable to the petitioner, okay? Any board members have any comments on that discussion?
I just think it would be more fruitful if we were able to continue it until a time that Wells Fargo could meet with the petitioner.
Nothing to keep us with the 28th, continue it to the next month as well. If they don't meet between now and there, there's nothing that said we couldn't.
Yes, I agree. We could do that.
So, I mean, just to try to, you know, work something out. I'd like to move this thing along.
It would push them to. If I could just seek clarification from the petitioner. And Doug, you can sit there. You probably need to consult. Pushing this to the May 28th work session will put you to the July city council meeting, which is at this point scheduled for July 20th, because they are not going to be holding a meeting on the 6th. Just want to make sure that you understand that pushing this to work session will push you to the July, the second meeting in July.
So it makes no difference whether we do it at work session or our next public hearing.
Correct.
Your public hearing meeting, if you do do it on the 28th, we would look to have that meeting in this room to, you know, even though you're not opening your public hearing, we would want it more accessible to the public.
Mr. Stimmel? I mean, you heard what you said. Doing it the 28th still doesn't, it's still going to be July. We'll continue it to the 28th or the 11th. Is that, is it okay?
My question is, if we continue it to the 11th, will we only be able to talk to them for one day before the 11th anyway? We're happy to meet with them, and I'm not sure who the decision-maker can be. I don't know if it can be these two individuals or probably. Okay. So if it puts us at the same... You're saying you can't do anything for two weeks?
Yeah, I would prefer June the 11th. Again, it brings the facts of dibs. Correct. We don't know if the OCC, we don't know what our federal regulations are.
And they probably won't for quite some time.
It probably won't go by the 11th.
Yeah, right.
Give them a second, okay.
Father, taking a second, let me ask my question to you. I just want to clarify. Several things were mentioned about the Sunny Knoll agreement, and even the words "binding agreement" were used. But I think what you said is that with any rezoning, there's potential for additional rezoning. So if there was agreement that said you can't rezone, that's not something that went through the planning board or the city council? Is that safe to say?
That is a safe assumption.
Thank you. Also, let me just comment that this isn't for you, just in general, that before hearing different people share the concerns, I thought this issue was more, the concerns with this issue was more about traffic and the character of the community. But this is a great example of why these public hearings are so important, because now I see that explosion risks, security, and the agreement are really the concerns that the community has. So just want to applaud you for taking the time to express your concerns, both here and those who aren't here who have expressed their concerns.
We want to work with them, so we'll be willing to continue it beyond the 28th if that helps them. I just hope that we don't get to the later date, and we're just starting discussion, and it drags on for months. Because we will need to go with a vote at that time, based on our contracts as well.
Well, if they're concerned about the opposite, you know, comfortable currency shutting them down, having to get another tier-four data center, they will be moving this. So that's something she said she's concerned about, so. All right, so I'd amend my motion to move this.
Did you make a motion, or Mr.?
Mr. Lamb did.
You did, okay.
Continue it to the 11th, is that what we said?
Yes. Next, 11th.
Attorney Lamb.
To the next public hearing. You second that. End of the discussion. Most continue for a month. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Folks, would you please, if you're going to carry your conversations out to the hallway, we'd appreciate it, and we'd like to, we have a couple more hearings. Okay, thank you. All right, Kirk, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The next item is UDO 258. The petitioner is Planning and Development Services staff. And this request would amend the view corridor regulations for off-premise signs, billboards. So just to give you a little bit of background on this, the UDO contains regulations for something known as view corridors, which are basically specially identified sections of major highways where new billboards are prohibited. And the purpose of these corridors is to ensure that scenic views and vistas are preserved, particularly of places like our downtown, where it's important that travelers going through the area and local citizens have unobstructed views of these places. View corridors currently exist in Winston-Salem and Forsyth County along parts of 52, along parts of both 40 and Business 40, I-74, also previously known as 311, and also the proposed Northern Beltway corridor. This is a map that was adopted a few decades ago when these view corridors were established. The dark black lines show the areas where the view corridors are currently. So again, most of the downtown area, most of 40 and 311. Three major highway construction projects are underway in Winston and Forsyth County, as you all are aware. The first of these is the eastern leg of the Northern Beltway is under construction in the Kernersville-Walker Town area. The Salem Creek Connector is currently under construction downtown. And the Business 40 reconstruction process is going to be starting in 2016, which will be going through downtown. And that's going to start with construction on a new Peters Creek Parkway Bridge. Staff believes that these view corridor regulations should be adjusted. Staff believes that these view corridor regulations should be adjusted to ensure that the entirety of these new and improved highways are protected with view corridors. And I've got a map in a minute that'll show what that will entail. Also, I just want to point out that, as you all are well aware, downtown has expanded to both the east and the south since the view corridor regulations were adopted twenty years ago. The Wake Forest Innovation Corridor, Winston-Salem State University on the east, the ballpark, the new Link Apartments at Brookstown on the west. You all saw the article in the paper last week about the new multimillion dollar development that's also proposed in that area. So again, we want to protect the views of these areas. So staff recommends filling in the gaps in the downtown area on Highway fifty-two and Business Forty. As proposed, and again, I'll give you a map in a minute, but just verbally, view corridors would exist on Business Forty from Peters Creek Parkway on the west to Winston-Salem State, the Highway one fifty-eight area on the east, and from fifty-two on the west side, all the way from Sixteenth Street up north to Mock Street on the south, which is where the new Salem Creek Connector comes in, and on the east side, from Business Forty, again, to Mock Street. And with regards to the Northern Beltway, staff also recommends clarifying the existing language for the purpose that the text of this ordinance currently calls the Northern Beltway the northeast connector. We believe that that's unclear, since that project has since been renamed, and we wanted to update that to reflect the current terminology of where that highway ends and what it actually is called. So this is the map that shows where we're proposing expanding the view corridors. You can see, this is the inset map showing the downtown area. The red maps, the lines along Business Forty are areas where new development has occurred with the research park and the ballpark area developments, so we wanted to make sure those are included for one continuous protected corridor. And, if I can get the mouse to reappear, this is the Salem Creek Connector view protection area that we wanted to make sure that's in there. And lastly, this red dashed line over here is where the Northern Beltway is now shown to terminate, so we wanted to make sure that was corrected as well. Overall, staff believes that this proposed amendment will help promote the attractive image along both new and improved highways in Winston-Salem and Forsyth County by preventing the construction of new billboards. And of course, just one last point of clarification, any existing billboards in these areas would be allowed to remain, so this is just moving forward. I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Is building signage impacted by this classification?
It does not.
Okay. Cool.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in support of this? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second motion, Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Younger in discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, that's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is UDO text amendment two fifty-nine, and we are, again, are the petitioner's staff, and the request is to amend the historic and historic overlay district requirements. And this amendment includes two separate proposed changes to the UDO, one that only applies in the city. The first, that one is required to combined use. It's something we found in the ordinance that we didn't think probably belongs in there any longer. It includes language that requires the Historic Resource Commission and the Community Appearance Commission to review certain combined uses in the CI zoning district in Winston-Salem. When we became aware of that language in there, we realized that there's no standards for their review and there's no basis for them to make any recommendations or requirements because it's general use zoning. So really, if someone has general use zoning, wants to go in there and do this permitted use, this would basically slow them down for a month, and then there'd be no finding comments that can come out of these boards anyway, so we're recommending that we do away with that requirement. All the other changes proposed deal with the historic historic overlay district requirements. They include clarifications and updates to how applicants are notified, time limits of the COAs, and the appeal process. And then also some new language regarding our policies on after-the-fact COAs. So again, I mentioned already, the elimination of the review would improve the development review process and eliminate this timely step for folks who already have general use zoning. The form of decision section is proposed to be rewritten to clarify and update the language and eliminate some unnecessary language. It just makes it more clear when the action is taken, and that helps later when some, when we're trying to figure out the thirty-day appeal period. There's also, it includes some requirements that have proven to be unreasonable. That's the time limit sections for the, how long a COA or certificate of appropriateness is valid. The language it said, you had to complete it in a year, but then it says staff can extend it. Doesn't say how long staff can extend it for. The HRC at their annual retreat talked about this quite a bit and ended up voting that we have a three-year limit, which would take care of most COA projects. People can get it done. And we've also established some backend requirements we never used to have, where they have to send us back a letter and a picture showing they got done, and we can go follow up later to see if these COAs are done. So it's a lot better to just have a longer time period and not worry about them coming in and asking for extensions on a yearly basis. The appeal section includes minor changes. So that, again, some of what I discussed. This new section for after-the-fact COAs, again, someone does something in a historic district that needed a COA, but they didn't get one, we call it an after-the-fact COA. We've had these policies in place for some time, including a fee that went through this board and was adopted by the elected boards. Fee for after-the-fact is kind of a light fee that just sort of helps remind people they're supposed to come in before they do things. And it defines, it defines them, and it makes it, clarifies that all after-the-facts have to go to the HRC. There are things that had they come in in advance, staff could have approved it, but they do it ahead of time and don't get permission, then they have to go to the HRC. HRC wanted all of them to have to go to them. So we do recommend approval of these changes, and be happy to try and answer any of your questions.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in support of this? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Public hearing closed.
Move approval. Could I, could I get some clarifications there?
I do attend, as Mr. Reed knows, all the HRC meetings and do live in a historic overlay, so I've sort of checked on some of the changes with this with the folks and neighborhoods that have lived through this, and I think part of this is being generated by the fact there have been several after-the-fact situations, and those come up. You ask the person to change it, and it's treated like a new application, and you wonder, well, are people just going to go ahead and do it anyway and then come in after the fact? So the fines, can you just define for the public here what the fines would be for something like this?
An after-the-fact application is seventy-five dollars for the first offense and I believe it's, well, it's in here, the, I think.
But to clarify, it's a fee, it is not a fine.
It's a fee, it's not a fine, okay.
It is an application fee.
So it's like a reapplication.
And it goes up twice, up to two hundred dollars if people continue to do this with their property, that the maximum is two hundred dollars each time they come in for a COA for something they did without getting a COA first.
And have those numbers changed since our work session? Have those changed?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, I wasn't- And likewise, if I could just interject, if it has risen to the level of, or brought to the attention through a notice of violation and a rezoning violation and corrective action was necessary, it will also be double fee as far as their permit issued through the inspections office.
Oh, okay. Some of them don't require permits, so.
Correct.
Right. Now, my other understanding of this, and this is, in the West End has been, I guess, in effect since ninety-three, is that right, with the overlay, or was it ninety-four?
Ninety-three.
Being a part of that, of course, it was a hard change for folks to start remembering when they were replacing windows, you know, changing doors and things like that that faced the public. There continue to be, as was exhibited at the last HRC meeting, plenty of after-the-facts that are existing in the West End and probably in other overlay areas, if there are many more. Not many more, I don't believe. And so this would go back to anybody, even if in nineteen ninety-six, they did something that should have followed the overlay rules.
Yeah.
And even in a prior addition of those rules, because the overlay changed, it was revised at a period of time in there. So if somebody did something in ninety-six and it was brought to their attention that they should not have done that because it was against the overlay, then that would still apply. There would have to be a new fee, these new rules would still apply to that.
Again, it's complaint basis, just like our zoning violations are, and that's about the level we staff it at, is that to try and manage the number of complaints that come in. So if neighbors are sitting there, you know, they don't know somebody replaced their windows fifteen years ago, they're not going to call them in. We've had a rash because one property owner who was called in to get a COA for replacement windows turned in sixteen other properties, and now we're going through those cases, we're about halfway through. Some got COAs, some have come in for after-the-fact, got approved, others were about to turn over to zoning enforcement because they haven't called us back. And so it really comes out of that. I mean, if it had brought, if someone calls in and complains and they say, I think in ninety-six, my neighbor put in replacement windows, we would investigate that, try and find out if that's the fact, and then go through the process just like if they had done it yesterday.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could seek clarification, second the motion. Okay, so there has not been a second, okay. Was there a motion?
Yeah. Mr. Lamb made a motion, Mr. Ryan Saxton, okay. Any further discussion?
I guess I'm just some clarification on this, how far back this can go? I mean, forever, if anybody ever did anything-
Prior to the, to the creation of the overlay district.
So not to the creation of this change in the ordinance from here forward, you have these fees and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
From the creation of the overlay district. Or subsequent changes there too. Yeah, sure. If something wasn't regulated and now it is, then we would go back to the date of regulation.
So it would apply to what was in effect at the time they made the change?
Correct.
Okay, that was the point I was trying to make sure of.
If it's properly altered, that was subsequently deemed not, well, I don't even know how to say it. Improper, then you would be fine because you did it under the regulations at the time.
Okay.
Clear as mud, right?
Anybody else have a question, more further excuses, or? We have a motion for approval, all in favor? Any opposed, that's unanimous.
All right, last item, UDO two sixty, and this is an outside request. The petitioner is Salem Baptist Church Marywood Christian Camp, and this is a request to revise the UDO to add the use of campground. Marywood Camp is an existing camp in western Forsyth County, out towards the Yadkin River, and it's currently zoned RS forty. It was established in the sixties before zoning was intact, so we do consider it legally non-conforming. If we were to classify this use today under the current UDO, we would have to classify it as recreation services outdoors, that's the closest use we have in the ordinance now. That use is not allowed in RS forty zoning. As we've worked with the folks in the camp, they've talked about potential expansion issues and expansion issues in the future. The legally non-conforming status poses some challenges there, this is a one-time twenty-five percent expansion, and that's all they get. We looked at commercial zoning, where rec services outdoors allowed, you run into illegal spot zoning issues and just really not being appropriate at this location. We looked at IP zoning, and there were some things in the use conditions that they didn't meet, so that didn't work. So at the end of the day, they decided to file a text amendment and create the use of campground and put it in the ordinance, and that's where we're at today. So there are several components to this amendment. There's a definition that you see in your staff report, and we kind of canvassed other communities in North Carolina to come up with some of the pieces of that, so we feel pretty good about that. The text amendment proposes to allow this use only in the Yadkin River agricultural, RS forty and RS thirty districts with the approval of a Board of Adjustment Special Use Permit. There is a size threshold, it's a minimum of ten acres. It does include a buffer yard requirement that's basically equivalent to a type-two around the perimeter. It's the primary evergreens and the deciduous trees, but not the shrubs. We didn't feel like the shrubs would do much good in a large rural setting like this, so it's the other two that are part of the type-two buffer requirement. It does include a setback fifty feet for all buildings, athletic fields, and activity areas.
Wait a minute, here, go back. Special use permit just applies on RS thirty or on all four districts?
All districts.
All districts, definitely, of course, special use permit, okay.
Yes. Lighting is proposed, it's prohibited for athletic fields and activity areas. I mean, you could obviously have some lighting to kind of maneuver around your buildings, but not the large lighting you typically see with those other two uses. It's restricted to growth management area four, our future growth area, and five, our rural area, just those two growth management areas only. We did have to put signage in here, and the signage is comparable to what you would see from other uses in rural residential zoning districts. For parking, this was kind of a tough one to crack here. What we came up with is one space per employee. Their camp, they generally have kids dropped off out there, so there's not a lot of kids driving to this. However, again, when we look at this, we have to think of this in terms of the whole county and what might come in the future. You may have some other camps that operate differently, so we did allow for grass overflow parking, again, with ten acres. You would assume there's probably some grass area to park those cars and not spill out into neighborhoods. Again, as I mentioned to you, when we look at this, it is their request, but we kind of had to think holistically about what could happen countywide, and we think that we've come up with a pretty good set of regulations that would not only address their situation, but would also work fairly well for future camp uses in the county. We did canvass a lot of the other North Carolina communities, and what we've come up with is pretty comparable to what other folks have in their ordinances for how they regulate these. It's pretty much limited to primarily the rural areas of the county, and we feel like it does include adequate safeguards for residential properties that would surround the site. And the last part is, it really gives our staff a little, a more accurate tool to regulate and permit these than the current rec services outdoor use, which really is not very close to what these things are. So staff has reviewed this, and we do recommend approval of this. I know the petitioners are here, they've been camping out for the past couple hours back there. I'd be glad to answer any questions as well.
Any questions, the staff?
Do you happen to have a map of the growth management areas? I was curious as to whether there was any GMA four in Winston-Salem.
That's, uh-
East, northeast, and perhaps southeast, there might be a few acres, but it's not-
Maybe some here, if you can call the mouse, kind of between Walker Town and northern Winston-Salem, maybe, maybe a touch over here. I don't know, I'm sorry, that's in the county. Not much, if any.
Where on this map is this particular camp, Marywood?
It's below forty and west of Clemens, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So somewhere-
Above forty.
No, it's going to be above forty. I think it's in that green over there.
Yeah, I think it's that green area right there.
Or maybe even-
Out off the Yadkin River.
The petitioner could probably kind of point it out a little bit better than I can, but-
We can't see it.
Oh, that's right. If you want to pop, if you want to come up and just point it out, you can look on the map right there. I'm sure you can just point to it.
Yeah. About right in here, maybe?
That's right. It's outside of Clemens, right, so it's going to be-
It is, no, it is in the county.
Yeah, so it's going to be right up there.
Yeah, it's definitely in GMA four, or we wouldn't write the text amendment that way.
It's outside of Clemmons, right? So it's going to be? It is, no, it is in the county. Yeah, so it's going to be right up there.
Yeah. It's definitely in GMA 4, or we wouldn't write the text amendment either way.
Yeah. Four, five.
That looks like the little lake right there. We've got about 5 acres, 5 acres.
I had a couple more questions, Aaron, about the definition of campground. I was a little confused by that. I know there's no RVs, right?
Right.
But I'm assuming that this would include a campground that has tent campsites that are?
It could. It's really targeted more towards the civic, church, Boy Scout, Girl Scout. I think we kind of put that language in there to kind of try to redefine it, but it was kind of a tough definition to write, but that's the intent, is it's targeted more towards those types of uses.
With cabins, you're saying?
Correct.
So if someone wanted to do campground with tent campsites, that would be included under this?
It would. It would be the closest use in the ordinance at that point, yes.
And is there any requirement about length of stay? Could this be a permanent, sort of semi-permanent home for people?
I don't, you know, the first line says engage in seasonal or overnight. I mean, so I mean, we kind of put that in there to try to add to that, but so that's really the target of the seasonal or overnight.
And keep in mind, and I'll interject a little bit, you know, one of the reasons why we do put examples of things in campgrounds is so we can, or in definitions, is so we can try to steer where we're going with the definition, but not be exhaustive. But it says, "Examples include not limited to religious institution camps or retreats, Boy Scout camps, Girl Scout camps." Again, it's not limited to that, but if someone were to come in and propose something that would essentially determine into a de facto permanent living situation where folks were living in cabins or living on campsites, and it wasn't affiliated with an organization such as this, it wouldn't be permitted under that use. And if we had permitted under this use, and that's what it became, we would have the grounds to revoke their permit.
Okay. Good, that answers my question. The other question I had had to do with sanitary facilities. Any requirements along that, bathrooms, porta-johns?
We typically don't get into that in here. That's usually kind of a combination of Health Department and Building Code as far as that goes, so we usually don't get into that in the zoning ordinance.
Correct.
But there would be some way to regulate that?
Yes, I mean, if they were coming in, and again, through a cabin facility, there would be requirements for, you know, for the structure, for bathrooms and those kind of things. Through, if someone were coming through to propose a campsite campground that didn't have permanent structures, but you came in and you pitched your tent, you know, were there for a limited stay, they would have to have facilities, you know, bathhouses, those kind of things would have to be included as part of their approval process. They wouldn't, they would have to address that one way or the other.
Okay.
They still got to go through a special use permit process as well.
Yeah, I had a good question. I'm not clear, does planning, well, the, no, we don't hold a hearing, the staff will do a review.
Correct.
So, okay.
Under the, under section 6-1.4a 2N.
Right.
Campgrounds are excluded from coming to the planning board under proposal. There are some special use permits that the planning board reviews the site plan and makes a recommendation to the Board of Adjustment. There are others that they do not. The trend over the last several years has been to minimize the amount of things that are brought here under a planning board review from the standpoint of, a lot of times there is not a lot of, after they've been through the review process, there's not a lot of additional things that are conditioned or added by either staff or the planning board. And also as kind of a service to the development community in not having to come to multiple boards. But obviously, that's up to your discretion.
So somewhere there's a requirement for a site plan approval that then, before it goes to Board of Adjustment?
Yes, that's the standard. It's usually for a Board of Adjustment Special Use Permit, it comes to the planning board first. However, the section you see in the back there is the part where there's an exemption. And what you see, letter N campground, there's A through M above that of items that currently are exempted from coming to this board before they go to Board of Adjustment.
But you haven't omitted the site plan review and approval by?
This board.
No, but the site, staff will still look at a site plan?
Correct. Part of the Board of Adjustment Special Use Permit, yes.
Okay, so that's still in? Okay.
Any other questions, the staff? Anyone? This is a public hearing. Staff recommend approval. I hope you guys won't talk yourself out of it now. Terry Covington?
Yes, my name's Terry Covington. Address of the camp, Marywood Christian Camp, is 9640 Centigro Church Road, Clemmons, North Carolina. And I just want to, we've been there for 50 years, as Aaron has said, and really, we're just locked in. We can't do anything. Our buildings are 40, 50 years old, and we can't build new buildings. I had an Eagle Scout that just wanted to build me a archery pavilion, and that's kind of what started this about a year and a half ago. But we weren't allowed to do it because we're not allowed to build anything. He just wanted to build a little cover area to keep our campers dry and just shady to do archery, and we couldn't do it. And so that's where this all started. And so we just are trying to do something, just to, you know, be able to make our facilities better. We have been able to do some things over the last couple of years with our dining hall to do improvements, but we couldn't do a new dining hall. We had to just do renovations. But our cabins are not quite the same way. And really, the clientele would like to have a little bit bigger cabins, would like to have air conditioning and those type of things, and they're not really designed, built 50 years ago to do that. And so that's why we're trying to do this, to be able to do some things, upgrade, and become more modern with the clientele. And we do serve 1,200 campers each summer, and that come to our facilities and stuff, so. Any questions? No?
Thanks, sir. Don Sundon?
Yes, my name is Don Sundon. I live at 935 West Bank Street, Winston-Salem, 27101. And I just am supporting this so that we can be able to do the expansions. We would like to remodel some of the cabins and get mainly some of the bathroom facilities up to be able to get them up to code, and we can't because we don't have the room to be able to do it. So that's one of the main reasons, too, to be able to do it, to make it more modernized and facilitate better for the campers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other gentleman like to speak?
I pretty much covered it.
You stayed here all afternoon, you might as well come say something.
My name is Bill Edwards. I live at 8831 Centigro Church Road. I'm a neighbor of the camp, and I help down there a little bit. And some of the facilities down there are aged out, as my father did the plumbing in the original buildings. And so I have helped, being a plumber myself, I have helped tear out my dad's work. So they're just trying to upgrade it to make better for the kids, and we appreciate what you can do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right.
My name's JT Grimes. Live at 8940 McIntosh Lane in Clemmons, about three or four miles from the camp. Actually, had the privilege of helping them do some design work for repairing their dam. It was 50 years old, too, and needed some help, and just really support everything they're doing. And just want to come, just to give them support, and also just a voice that, really pleased with everything they're doing out there. All my kids have gone to camp there, and just really encourage all the kids to go out there.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? 701, anyone like to speak in opposition? 701, we prepare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second Mr. Little. Any discussion? All in favor? Whoops, excuse me, excuse me.
I am not opposed in principle to this concept, but I do have a concern about the review process. To me, there are so many different types of camps, there's so many different issues that can arise, so many ways that this could impact people who live nearby. I don't feel comfortable with it just going to the Board of Adjustment for special use permit and not even going through the planning board for review. I would, I think that the best solution would be to go to the elected body for approval. And for that reason, I don't support this as it's being proposed.
Any other comments, discussion? We have a motion for approval, as it is, unless someone wants to amend their motion to send it to the elected body.
I have some doubts because it could impose a lot on an adjoining property owner, but I don't know if you've got 10 acres. Is the 10 acres the campground area itself, or could somebody have a 10-acre site and add to that?
Let me ask this, maybe, and maybe this might alleviate some of the concern. If we up that minimum acreage to, say, 20 acres, would that work?
I'm fine with it.
That would take care of my concerns, because my concern is someone, if it's not really clear, someone, and for a good purpose I support that, may have, you know, that acreage, and they're doing something else. I know we've got 10 acres, now we're going to add this to it, and it's not a part of the whole idea of the camp and the, I guess, the remoteness and not imposing on that. Because it, I went to camp, and it's, it is noisy, it would be a big change to whoever's next to it, I think, being able to do that.
Let me just ask clarification that. I mean, this, this could be applied to adults going to a camp, too, right? I mean, there's nothing in there that says this is children or under 18 or anything like this, so it could be a wide variety of reasons that people go.
Could be.
Some of them could be driving, some of them could be dropped off. And I don't know whether that was entered into your concern, Melinda, when you were talking about some of the things that have happened to other campgrounds in Forsyth County, when they've turned into being used for other things other than the intent. And I think what we have to do here is, we have to think about, okay, hey, that's a great camp there, but how's the next person going to interpret this? So we want to be sure that that interpretation is clear enough that it doesn't get misused anywhere down the road. And I don't know how to do that.
I guess what comes to my mind is something like the campgrounds at Tanglewood.
That was what I was thinking about.
If someone wanted to put that in a new area, that could have a big impact on someone, the adjacent property owners.
Well, that's why I think that, because there's so many different issues that could crop up, it makes more sense to me that it goes to the elected body to take a look at each individual case as it comes up.
We already have the use recreational vehicle park. What districts is that allowed in? We do have a use, so for example, Tanglewood, although it's probably accessory, is, would be not really this use, but would be the recreational vehicle park, if it was a standalone So if it starts looking like Tanglewood, it's a recreational vehicle park?
But they have campgrounds that are, they have tent campsites there, too, bathhouses.
It would still probably fall, it's still probably the closest use. You know, if you have one component, it's going to be the more intense of what you have. They're allowed with a Board of Adjustment Special Use Permit in the same districts that this is proposed for. In addition to that, they are allowed, believe it or not, in the HB district.
And I believe that was specifically done because of, what's the RV?
Clemmons.
Yeah, Clemmons RV up on.
University.
University, close to Rural Hall. They actually, at one point, were proposing to have some campsites on their property. And I may have gone through a text amendment to add that. I can't remember.
We have a motion to approve this, okay? Anyone have any other comments? If not, I won't call the vote in. All in favor? Opposed? Brian, Ms. Smith, and Ms. Duncan oppose. That passes 5 to 3.
I just, I want to comment, it's not in opposition to what has started this. I very much support that, that it's the bigger picture, as it said in there. You don't want to do something outside of this specific case that is applicable everywhere. That could be a problem.
None.
We have a staff report.
I just have a couple of things. Just a reminder of your work session coming up on the 28th. Prior to your work session, Deputy City Attorney Al Andrews will be doing an ethics session. So I hope you all, well, it's of course optional, but I hope you choose to attend, particularly if you have not yet done an ethics session with Al. They're usually a good use of time and sometimes entertaining.
What time's that ethics session slated to begin?
3:30.
3:30?
3:30. In your, in the room that we, on the second floor of the conference room, where you have your work session. Okay? Some things coming up on your work session. We'll be distributing an updated area plan status report. It's a sharply documented, and its purpose is really to show folks where we are on area plan recommendations, and really to help facilitate implementation, getting it on the, getting some of those recommendations on work program and budgets of city and county departments. We'll also have a report on rural historic preservation, and then we'll talk about two text amendments, the parking and the neighborhood business district. So should be a fun, full meeting.
Thank you.
And the only other thing I had, I put at your place is, this is the second week of Historic Preservation Month. We did distribute to you all at your work session a full schedule, but Michelle is providing us with weekly updates. And I guess one thing to point out is, you know, historic preservation is not just a Winston-Salem thing. Big emphasis on getting out into the other communities this month. There will be a presentation on May 16th in Cornersville at the Folly, and then on May 17th, the real exciting Family Fun Day in Rural Hall. If you have, particularly if you have children who are into trains, or grandchildren who are into trains, it should be a fun time. And then outside of this next week, but next, at the end of the month, the month concludes with a trolley tour, and there's still a limited number of tickets available, so. Please consider participating. That's all I have.
I want to recognize Mr. Younger. Next Thursday, he'll be recognized with the Council of Chamber of Commerce as their Small Business Advocate of the Year, so we congratulate Younger. Thank you very much. Any other board members, anything for the good of the order? Mr. Mulvaney's not here.
Move a term.
Okay. Okay.